Patience. I would like to welcome you all back and open the city council meeting, call the meeting to order. First item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I will ask to let the record reflect that all council members are present, and I would like to take this time, it's not on the agenda specifically, but to introduce and welcome our new city manager, Ikani Tamapeo, and say we have just been delighted to have you with us for the last month. And Ikani comes to us from Santa Paula. Some of you who watch our regular meetings may have seen that a couple of his council members and colleagues from the city of Santa Paula came to our last meeting and talked to us in glowing terms. Unfortunately, Ikani was not able to be at that meeting, but I understand he had a great breakfast. They came up all the way from Santa Paula to be here for Ikani's first meeting, which is a very high tribute indeed, and we felt very honored to have them here. So now we know who to talk to if we ever have other questions we need to answer. But I wanted to welcome Ikani. He is going to be a real energizer here in Clayton. He's already getting his feet wet and digging in and learning as much as possible. And I've told him he's a bit of a sponge, having to absorb all this stuff fast and furiously. But I wanted to give Ikani just a few minutes to introduce himself to our community because we know there are a lot of folks out there who do watch these productions, and welcome. Takes a second to warm up.
The green light should be on the top.
Right here.
It's coming.
Mayor, can I?
Yeah, sure. And Ikani brought his family with him too, and he's got three beautiful little girls as well as a gorgeous wife. So we would love to have them come up and be welcomed as well because they're new members of our community.
Thank you. Mayor, Honorable Mayor, City Council, thank you so much for the opportunity. I just wanted to take this time to come before you and come before the community and let you know that I'm here to serve you. I appreciate the opportunity. I'm humbled. It is a sacred opportunity, and I just want to let everybody know that I know who pays my paycheck. And for that, I am here to serve you all because my policy is an open door policy, especially for you, City Council, but especially for all the community. I want to let you know that I'm here to listen to all of you, and if there's anything that we can do, if there's a way and there's a will, we'll make it happen. So I just wanted to share a little bit about myself, some maybe have some question marks, be a bit curious. Please set up an appointment. I can come out to you, I can meet you and say more, but I'll just share, just take a few seconds. I have my master's in public administration, and during that time, I started my internship being a management analyst and working for cities, small cities, and working through economic development, picking things up, working with recreation information technology. And as Mayor said, I love being a sponge, working for cities. Every day, you don't know what's going to happen. So ended up turning in that experience and facilitating $1.15 billion worth of economic development projects for the cities that I've worked for. I've been able to recruit a data center worth $500 million Facebook project into one of my previous cities. And that's only because of the creative style of collaboration and teamwork of working with the community. That's one of the things that I plan on doing here. I've been embraced by you, City Council, and I've been embraced by a great staff, very professional. They have embraced me. Thank you so much to all the staff who are watching online, who have opened their arms to me as well, and I appreciate it. I look forward to working with staff. City Council, just want to take a little time to introduce my family, have the boss of the family, my wife, come out, and I have three little girls. Just want to introduce them.
They're growing up fast, Ikani.
Well, I apologize, but I just have to, as you can see, this is our family, and I just want to let you know that, just like you have embraced me into the family of Clayton, I want to let you know that it's not only myself. When I'm in the office, it's because I can't do it without my wife and my girls. And so she's the true boss, and really, she's the boss right now of the family.
Looks like it.
Yeah. So I just want to say, my family, we're so grateful for the opportunity. We're here to be part of your family, and this is just something that we wanted to take the time to present our family to you, City Council, to staff, and to all the community, and just let you know that we're here, we're serious, and we really want to make a difference. And whatever anybody needs, we're just here to serve and give our heart. So just want to say thank you. Dagmar, did you want to say anything?
Well, I'm just, I'm really excited about being a part of this community. Really excited about the schools, since we have three little ones. I've heard great things about it, and this is my type of community. It feels like it's very like family-friendly, and so I'm excited to be here and to raise my children here.
Wonderful. We are absolutely thrilled, and you will find it is a very sharing community, and everybody gets involved, and everybody knows what everybody else is doing. So you will be very, very quickly embraced by the entire community.
And we know it's a boy. We know everything.
So anyway, thank you so much, and we look forward to seeing you all around town a lot. Thanks for coming. That's really special. All right. We will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the Consent Calendar. I would just make one note that Item C is the appointment of Robert Casey as Clayton's representative to the County Connection Citizen Advisory Committee. That position has been vacant for several years, and Robert has volunteered. Robert, come say hello and introduce yourself to the council, and just tell us why you wanted to be on this Citizens Advisory Committee.
Well, first, I want to say that I've lived here for 30 years this month, and this is the first city council meeting I've ever attended. Shame on me. I was walking, doing my usual walk around Dana Hills with my dog Dexter, and passed the, I think it's new bulletin board down across from Skipholinies. I started reading it, and I retired several years ago after 40 years in journalism, and I commuted to Sacramento from Clayton. How did I do that, you ask, for so long? Public transit. I rode the Capitol Corridor train every day, made lots of friends with the conductors. Bart connecting to County Connection, Julie knows, you know, the Route 10 bus. And I thought, well, this just looks like something that would be interesting with someone of my background to look into. So that's why I'm interested in, if it's been unfilled for several years, I would like to fill it.
Well, we are welcoming you to the position, and we thank you very much. We would appreciate periodic reports, maybe every three to six months. Give us a holler and let us know what goes on at the Citizens Advisory Committee. Our representative to County Connection on the board is Keith Hayden, former mayor, but we're always interested to see what the other citizens have to say too. They don't always agree with the policymakers, so it's always good to hear.
Well, I'd like the thought about how County Connection is looking at lift
Yes.
to restore service to Dana Hills. I think that'd be...
There you go. There you go. Super. Thank you, Robert.
Thank you very much.
All right. With that, any other questions or additions or a motion for the Consent Calendar?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
I'll abstain.
You don't need to.
I don't need to?
Legally, you do not need to.
Okay, then aye.
Thank you.
You're saying it for the minutes, aren't you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, you know, you have to trust that Janet took the right notes.
That's right. All right. We have no other recognition and presentations this evening. We will go straight to reports. We did not have a Planning Commission meeting held due to the holidays since their marathon meeting earlier in the month. The Trails and Landscaping Committee will be meeting, I think, toward the end of this month, and we will go then to Ikani's first report as city manager.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. So I have two updates. Number one, I'm not the new kid on the block anymore. I know I gave my new speech, but we would like to welcome Officer Kelsey Wiggins to our police department. She's from Roseville. She just started December, the end of December, and she's starting right now with us, and she is on field training right now. So we're excited to have her on board. She comes from Roseville and attended Sonoma State, so we're excited to have her on. Last update, we have three, are you going to give that update? The three seats. Okay. We have three seats that are open right now for the Trails and Lands Committee, so just want to let everybody know, if you want to make a difference, the deadline is January 10th, so hopefully people apply for that. Janet, how many do we have?
Zero.
Zero.
Yes, we need people to apply for the Trails and Landscaping Committee. It is fun.
Yes. So I second that, Mayor. That's all the updates I have.
Okay. Very good. City Council reports, we'll start with Tuya.
I have no committee or other liaison reports.
It was a sort of a light week or two.
Nothing from Finland?
No. Finland is all good and cold.
Jeff?
I made a 17-hour drive to Disneyland over the holiday. It was awesome.
You got stuck on the grapevine?
A little bit.
Uh huh.
It was still the happiest place on Earth.
Okay.
You mean the car?
Yeah. Other than that, I don't have a report. I did meet with Ikani to welcome him to the city. That's about it.
Absolutely. Very good. CW?
Since the last council meeting that I attended, I went to the Christmas tree lighting, also did the, was the emcee at the CBCA volunteer, yearly volunteer celebration, spent some time emailing constituents, was nice enough to be taken to lunch by one of the constituents, and I attended the East Bay Habitat Conservancy, East County Habitat Conservancy meeting in Pittsburgh, and that is all.
Very good. Jim?
Yeah, I had a couple of things. Number one, on the 19th of December, I attended the farewell luncheon for David Waltering, our former interim's community director, was a very nice little fair, and I got to try some of that cuisine from DJ's. On the 4th of January, in case you hadn't noticed it, all of the decorations are gone in downtown. We took them down and put them away for another season. We'll be back out there next November to put them back up. One final thing, we had, I got some sad news through the police department where, when I moved here in 1979, joined the Clayton Police Department. At that time, we now have, at this point, we have 11 officers and a chief. Back then, we only had one chief. We had three officers. Well, I just found out that one of those officers, who was our day officer, Randy Simon, passed away on Christmas Day after a long-term respiratory illness in Oklahoma. And Randy was the day guy, and he was the traffic enforcer and all that, and he was a great police officer. And it was very sad to hear that Randy had passed away. But I'm going to be going through now because we have a records gap. We know who all the succession of chiefs of police were from when Clayton was incorporated in 1964 with the Sheriff's Department, and then the succession of police chiefs, but we're lacking a number of records on a number of the officers that we had. And unfortunately, two of those four officers have passed away. I found the fourth one, he's over in the, he's in the area, I'll just say that, and I'll be making contact with him. But I would like to honor Randy and for his service to the city of Clayton in his memory tonight. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Yeah. It was a holiday week, but several of the committees continued to meet, so I will just quickly summarize. The Countercost of Transportation Authority met in late December, and the Association of Bay Area Governments Housing Methodology Committee, on which I also serve, met to continue talking about what methodology we will be using in the Bay Area to allocate the regional housing needs assessment numbers. There will be a presentation by the Public Managers Association at the Mayor's Conference on Thursday evening in Pinole, if you'd like to go and hear more about that process. This will be primarily a general overview because none of the decision-making has actually been done. We've just been framing the question so far. We don't get the actual big number from the state of California until, it's supposed to be March, I'm guessing it's closer to April, it always runs late, and it could be even May before we get that. And then we will be figuring out how to divide that up among all of the Bay Area cities for the period from 2022 to 2030. So that's coming up. The Marsh Creek Trail Committee met for the first time in about six months, and this is talking about the potential, and I say that kind of in quotes, the potential to establish a hiking biking trail between the city of Clayton and the city of Brentwood. Much of that property is owned by public entities, be it Save Mount Diablo, East Bay Regional Parks. And the goal of this group getting together, we have members from Brentwood, we have two county supervisors, we've got many of the county staff, doing kind of a scoping session and a feasibility study of whether we could even actually accomplish it. And if so, how could we do it? It would have to be done in phases. It's going to be a long-term commitment. It won't be cheap. But the goal would be to try to get most of the pedestrians and bikes off of Marsh Creek Road and onto a trail that would be safe and good for recreation and that sort of thing. It may take investing in some easements. It will require probably some crossings. One of the things we're looking at now and have talked about a little bit is the possibility of using culverts under the road, which would actually allow for wildlife as well to get across the road. And that's been used in other areas very successfully and far cheaper than building bridges. So those are some of the things we're talking about. We're meeting on a sort of a staggered basis. It depends on how fast the staff can get to things, but the county is staffing it with some grant money that they got from the federal government for trails development. And so we're being very lean about our expectations, but we're at least exploring it. As all of you know, that is not a safe place for bikes and cars to mix. And so we're trying to see what long-term maybe our grandchildren will be able to enjoy if we can ever figure out how to do it. But that is an ongoing study. I attended the reception that was held by the Board of Realtors for all of the elected officials in the county. That was held in Walnut Creek in late December. And today, I had the honor of attending the reorganization luncheon for the Board of Supervisors. And Candace Anderson of District Two, the La Merinda and Danville-San Ramon area, is the new chair of the Board of Supervisors. I work with her on several other committees. And I just wanted to put out there one little announcement. Jim and I both work, along with former mayor Howard Geller, on the Concerts in the Grove for every summer. And we're getting to that time of year when on my to-do list is to send out the letters to potential sponsors to help us pay for those concerts. And if any of you have gone to the concerts, you know that we have big banners that we put up in the park in several locations that have the logos of many of our businesses. Those are businesses that each contribute $500 to have their logo on the banner. We are open to any individuals, other companies, other businesses to help us sponsor. Jim and Howard and I are all getting a little bit older, and CW helps with the collecting as well. And you know what? If we didn't have to walk around the entire concert to collect donations, it would be really nice. So I'm going to be sending those out, and if anybody out there is interested, contact me. All righty, that is our reports right now, and we will go on to the next business on our agenda, which is public comment. This is the opportunity for anyone in the audience to comment on any item pertaining to city business that is not on today's agenda. Is there anyone? I have no speaker cards, but if there's anyone that wishes to speak on any items not on tonight's agenda, seeing none, we will close public comment. We have no public hearings this evening. We have one action item, and that is a discussion of the citizen appointment to the vacated term of office for the Clayton Planning Commission. I don't think we have a staff report unless Ikani would like to introduce it, and you are more than welcome to if you'd like. Otherwise, I'll take it. Okay. So just prior to this meeting, we held interviews for a position that was vacated by one of our Planning Commission members. This position has a remaining term between now and the end of June. And so we will be interviewing again for all of the vacant positions in June. But we did hold interviews, because the Planning Commission is very busy right now, to fill this particular spot. Before the meeting, we interviewed three of our citizens who applied for this position, and now we have to have a discussion and decide who we're going to appoint. So I would entertain comments or suggestions or recommendations from my colleagues on the council. Tuya?
I'll start. So I was very impressed by all candidates. I think all of them had a sort of genuine interest in contributing to the commission and serving Clayton. I think all of them understood the need to maintain an open mind. I think all of them had slightly different type of qualifications, but qualifications that I think would be helpful in the commission. But what I think, I was personally most impressed by two candidates, and I think the reason why I was impressed by two candidates specifically was, both of them repeatedly emphasized a couple of things that I think are very important on the Planning Commission. Both of them emphasized the need to follow the law, to stay sort of fact and data-driven, to, both of them realized that there's a need to sometimes make tough decisions and decisions that aren't always popular. And I think both of them also mentioned how it's not necessary about one's own opinion, but really doing what's best in Clayton and what's also supported by facts and supported by law. So I think out of the three, my favorite candidates were James Porter and Terry Denzlo. So I found both to be, I think either one of them would be great on the commission.
Okay. Other comments. CW?
I was impressed as well with all of the candidates, and I would encourage them to reapply with the seats that may be coming up. And this is, I know, a short-term position for now, and we're going to have to go through this process again in June. I too was impressed by, with respect to all of them, I was impressed by Terry Denzlo in that she gets into the weeds, and I think at this point with the things that are going to be coming up on the Planning Commission, it's going to take somebody to really understand what is going on without too much, no bias really, just coming in and getting into the weeds of the issue. And I think that, given her experience coming to the Planning Commission meetings, coming to the city council meetings, and the fact that she applied last time, I think was impressive. My only concern with her last time was whether or not she would be staying in the area. And now that I understand that her job has changed and she does plan on staying in the area, that's who I would advocate for.
I would like to add my thanks to James Porter, Alan Z, and of course Terry Denzlo. They made excellent presentations to the council for this vacant position. There are going to be some major challenges, not only to the Planning Commission, but to the council and to this community at large over the next few months. And I was particularly pleased and impressed with Ms. Dunzlo on her ability to get out into the community that I have been able to see, not only coming to the city council meetings, but also attending Planning Commission, but the Clayton Business and Community Association, which in case many of you don't know, that has a real sense of the pulse in Clayton. The people in that organization are very, very interested in what goes on in this community and are very vocal, as are some of the members that are of the community that are not members of the CBCA. But one thing that I felt was that she expressed with this mindset of getting into a group that may not know all of the facts but have to rely on subject matter experts to help formulate a position or a decision, I think was very impressive.
So that was a recommendation?
That's my recommendation.
For Terry?
Terry.
Okay.
I actually, I too want to thank all the candidates for applying. I think it takes, it takes a lot of effort to put yourself out there, and so that's difficult. So I think I take the opposite approach that you just mentioned. You know, with, of the three candidates, you know, I think the background of Mr. Porter being a construction attorney is very relevant, and Mr. Z being an architect is also very relevant. I think that bringing that experience, it kind of rounds out the slate of current planning commissioners that we have. I found that I would like someone to bring subject matter expertise themselves as well as rely on others. So I think that the relevant professional experience for Mr. Porter and Mr. Z were more applicable to the role. I do think that each of the candidates focused on different areas. I think Mr. Porter had a strong focus on laws, which I appreciate, and, you know, Mr. Z focused heavily on being objective and focusing on the issues, so I think that was very important. Ms. Dunzlo focused on, you know, making sure that when we do, through change management, and I think all of those things are important, but when I'm looking for someone to fill the role in this, it's a very technical role that I think requires that very detail-oriented thing where you're not relying on subject matter experts, you're having to do the work yourself. And I see that being more strongly present in Mr. Porter and Mr. Z. And, you know, frankly, I think I was, you know, Ms. Dunzlo has been to many of the meetings, as you mentioned, but, you know, back when we were talking about the poorly housing issue back in March, you know, we were, we discussed the issue, and I think there's a lot of competing ideas on what our available options were, and that was fine. I think that was a healthy conversation. But, you know, during that time, you know, Ms. Dunzlo came to the podium and essentially accused myself and other council members of being racist for our discussion. To me, that's unsuitable. So I would be pretty strongly opposed in that area. But for both Mr. Z and Mr. Porter, I think they've both been real in skills. As I mentioned, I've met Mr. Z through community events, so I'm not exactly super impartial there, that's fine. But I think both would be well-qualified and serve the Planning Commission. I think their sense of community with their length of residence and their specific take... specific take on both the needs of the community as well as the desire to, you know, give something back to it, I think is weighs pretty heavily for me, so.
Well, I got to tell you, everybody should have a decision that has three qualified candidates. This is a tough one, and I agree that we have three folks who are all willing to put themselves out there. They all bring something slightly different to the table. And Mr. Porter is an attorney, he's got the time, he says now, to devote. Mr. Z is an architect. He's been on the other side of the podium and presented to Planning Commissions many, many, many times in his career, so he gets the process, so he's certainly well-schooled in that. And Terry came to the podium and understands very clearly that change doesn't happen overnight, and a community has to kind of pace themselves as they accept change. And they have to be helped to accept change. They all said we have to comply with the rules, that the law matters. You know, we could not go wrong with any of these candidates. So I hear three recommendations right now, if I'm correct, for Terry Dunslow. Is that right? Is that what I heard?
I think you had us recommending two each, so.
Yes, yes.
I mean, I would actually be a negative recommendation, so I don't know if that counts, but it depends on, I think, what you were saying.
So you know what? I'm good with all three of them, honestly, and I can see a reason for all three of them to be actually be on the commission. Now is one of those times when I almost wish we had seven positions like we did when I first joined the Planning Commission, because there's a lot to do and more voices actually help. But that's not where we are today. So I do think, from my own experience of having served for five years on the Planning Commission, when I first got started with working with the city, I think a woman's voice on the Planning Commission is very helpful. And so in that regard, I'm not saying anything negative about Jim and Alan. I hope that they reapply in June, but I would throw my support behind Terry. And so I would entertain a motion.
I would move to fill the vacancy of William Call by Ms. Terry Dunslow.
And I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed?
I'm opposed.
Okay. Very good. Congratulations. Thank you. And thank you for applying, Alan and James. We appreciate, we, you know, we didn't have a bad candidate this time. I can tell you that over the years on the Planning Committee, or on the city council, interviewing candidates for Planning Commission, one of the people I interviewed at one time, I asked what they thought should happen on the east end of town, and they didn't know where that was. And I said, "Out by the middle school," and they said, "Where's the middle school?" So we've had candidates who have applied who had no idea what the limits of our town actually were. So you guys are very well-informed, and I really hope you will stay involved. Trails and Landscape Committee needs people, so think about that. Think about that. So we appreciate it, and congratulations. Thank you very much. All right. We will go back to our agenda, and the next item on the agenda is council items, and this is an opportunity for council members to request items for future agendas. Do we have any of those? We've listed a few over the last several months, and I know Ikani is working on getting some of those on the calendar, but we need staff to do some of those things. And right now, we're short on staff getting some of those things. Tuya?
I only have a question. So typically in January, we have our goal-setting session. Have we talked about scheduling that yet, or do we want to? I guess we need to agendize that for next time, maybe?
Well, it would be nice to get it on the calendar. So maybe Ikani can work with staff, and we can find a time that works with our calendars, because it starts to get busy really quickly. So that would be great. Okay, anything else?
Yeah, I think with the reintroduction of SB 50 yesterday by State Senator Weiner, I know it's probably, we probably don't have consensus, but I would like the city to take a position in opposition. So if we could take that up at the next meeting, because I think it has to get out of committee by the end of, by the end of January.
It does. And we need to get an update on what all those changes actually are.
Yeah, the text of the bills.
Not the PR stuff.
No, the text of the bills out.
No, I know.
There's a red line that can be reviewed, but it's not that different. So I would, I'd like to take that up at the next meeting.
So we would...
That's provided it gets out of committee, though?
Well, no, I mean, I think it, well, I would like the city to take a position, obviously in opposition. However, the vote...
Maybe we put it on the agenda for review.
Yeah.
Okay.
And if it doesn't happen next meeting, then it's kind of, it becomes, it kind of gets a little mooted.
That's true. That's true. Okay. Anything else for future agendas? No?
We have so much, we've already asked for a lot of things.
We do have, we do have a list. We have a list for Airbnb-type regulations. We have our, well, we have several other items that we've put on there, so, and we're working on some of those, but we'll get there. All right. With nothing else, then, we will adjourn from the public meeting into a closed session. And we thank you all for coming, and we will excuse you so you can get home in time to see the final three days of Jeopardy!, the big championship. I don't know if...
And do you need to...
Well, there's the successor.
Oh, yes. We will go into closed session for the purpose of conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation. We have a significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2. This is one case that will be what we will be discussing. So we'll take a five-minute break while we do that.